Okay, we have the work session. And, uh, we have some of your, SunShare community solar?
Yeah.
That's me.
Okay.
A couple packets, don't think I brought enough, so you guys might have more.
They have the...
Oh, perfect.
Well, you're welcome.
You're welcome. You guys want to share?
Yeah, I want to raise two. Can you give that to the mayor or whatever?
Very much.
Here it is.
I got some stuff already.
I got one right too.
Alright.
I got my answer.
I apologize, we're in the middle of a logo change, so there might be some different logos. But, uh, first I just wanted to thank everyone for having me here, I appreciate it. And we just have a lot of things to cover, so appreciate the time. Um, Luann and I sat down, asked, um, talked about this idea of community solar. And I was wondering if anyone, you guys had looked into it, or have you read about it before? Or is this kind of a fresh new idea?
Probably some are fresh new idea if, um, you know, we can read over all of your references, stuff like that, or about your company, I guess we can get kind of... What's in it for us?
Sure. So, um, maybe, I'll take a second or two and just kind of talk about the concept. Um, as to what it is, I'm sure you guys have seen solar on the rooftops. Um, and they're great for the roofs that work, and if you have the money to pay for it, it's a fantastic idea, and we at SunShare support that. Um, we don't do rooftop solar. We do what's called community solar. Um, it was recently passed, um, it was passed in the end of 2013 by the Public Utilities Commission, um, the state Public Utilities Commission. And the idea is, if I don't have a good roof, or I don't have space for a roof, can I still participate in solar? Can I still be powered by solar? And that's what this is. We at SunShare are a developer. We go out, we find vacant land, anywhere in the county or an adjacent county, and we build out acres and acres of solar panels. And then you as a city, school districts, churches, residents, whomever, come in and subscribe through Excel and through SunShare. And now you can become a hundred percent powered by solar. Uh, without having to install anything on your property, on your roofs, or anything like that. The nice thing about it is you now actually save a bit of money while you do it. SunShare maintains, operates, ensures the entire project. We find the land, it's completely hands-off for you guys. Um, and we set a certain rate that we charge for access to that. And then Excel reimburses you at a certain rate to, for choosing solar, it's part of the program. Um, and they pay you a little bit more than we charge. So you get a bit of a savings, um, which you can dive into the proposal. But the idea is, you know, for the first time in the history of Excel Energy or Utilities, you get to say, hey, I'd like to get my energy from over here, from that solar garden. I'd like to essentially power, you know, my city, or school, or whatever, um, by solar power. And then, and you save a bit of money while you do it. That's kind of the basic concept of it. Um, we're working with Morton's Construction, um, who's doing our engineering procurement and, um, construction, EPC. Um, and we're also, we did what's called Pollinator Pledge, same thing that school's doing, native prairie grasses, and habitats for bees and butterflies and all that, where we do install these. We have a couple sites in, um, let's see, we have one in Carver, one in Dakota, one in Pope, one up in Sterns, two in Wright, and we're looking at a site in Washington. These range in size anywhere from five acres, um, all the way to fifty acres, um, depending on how much land we can find. Um, we actually looked at a plot of land, uh, for you guys, however, was it the old wastewater treatment thing? There was about a couple acres? Yeah, um, that was just kind of empty land, and we use it. It's in queue for the engineers to look at, we don't know if it's perfect just yet. We're trying to look at where the nearest substation is for Excel, the interconnection there. Um, and, uh, we'll get back probably in a week or two. We're pretty backed up right now, so they're great business.
So it's kind of like, I know someone that has wind, a windmill.
Uh-huh.
And it just goes back into the grid, and then they just get credit and...
You got it. Similar to that, where the, the electricity from these gardens wouldn't necessarily come to the city, but in effect it's offsetting that, the same amount.
Right. So how long have the gardens been being used?
Well, in Minnesota, um, no one's built any gardens yet. Um, the program just opened up, the end of 2014. So right now, we're in the middle of working with Excel on, there's an interconnection process, there's siding agreements, there's, um, engineering studies. We're looking to build a break around later this summer, and then kind of finish up by, by November, December. Um, SunShare itself has been around for about four years now. We've been working with Excel in Colorado for about three years. So we build, uh, the number would be ten megawatts or eleven megawatts of power systems already. Um, that's equivalent to about fifty or sixty acres, um, in Colorado. But because the program's so new in Minnesota, no one's built anything yet, we just haven't been enough time.
How long do they last?
Twenty-five years. Potentially more, but they need to be guaranteed. Our agreement with Excel is twenty-five years.
So what happens to, like, when I, we go out to South Dakota, and there's windmills all over the place.
Sure.
And what happens is, when they go down, they just abandon them.
Yeah.
And there's dead windmills laying everywhere.
Sure. So part of our interconnection agreement with Excel Energy requires us to bring the land back to a natural state. Essentially, we have to pull all the posts and take everything out. There's only a bit of cement, it's only for, it's called inverter, that brings the solar to the grid. We have to pull that out, and then we have to retail the land and let it go. Um, with most of our land builders, we have options to extend beyond twenty-five years because the property's still working and everything's fine while you take it apart. Um, but then, and then we have to relocate the land.
Sure.
Your minimum size, that'll do, or?
Um, not really. We looked at your energy use, and a hundred percent is what we quoted there. Uh, it's a fairly small amount, um, but that's a good thing. That either you're using very little energy, or you're very efficient in money. Um, so yeah, we suggest a hundred percent, but you don't have to.
So then, you'd be looking for land that the city owns and to use?
Well, here's the beauty of it, is that every garden we build is going to have any number of subscribers. They could be five, it could be ten, it could be a hundred. It doesn't matter where we actually build it. So for you guys, we already have land that's being built and developed and going to be ready to go by the end of the year. So if you had land that was vacant, we could look at building something like on, on the palm, but we wouldn't have to, it's not a requirement. Um, we could easily assign your subscription to something located in Carver County, Wright County.
So you're giving Excel Energy, and they're just banking it? They bank it for us, and we're still getting paid?
Yeah, so you're, you're, the agreement with Excel says we're saying nothing changes.
Yeah.
But what happens is you receive a bill credit for however much solar you produce. And then we would charge for access to that, but we charge a bit less.
So what's it cost us then?
Well, there's no upfront fees, no contracting fees, no capital expenses. It's strictly an energy contract, if you will. So if you look at page, maybe I could watch you through one of the pages? If you look at page, page twelve? So we looked at your capacity, which is point oh seven eight megawatts. Does that mean in, in real life? Well, a house is about five kilowatts, so seventy-eight divided by five. We're looking at maybe fifteen to twenty homes, is kind of the, the energy you guys use, fifteen to twenty. So you look at the table here, we have year one, five, ten, and twenty-five. We look at your estimated energy production per year. The panels do degrade a little bit over time, about half a percent per year. Now, your rate with Excel starts at eleven point nine cents per kilowatt hour. Everyone see that? Now, you go down two notches, our rate starts at eleven cents. So you save about a penny, or a point nine cents per kilowatt hour. Now, that's, it sounds small, but when you're using that many kilowatt hours you can add up, your first year you would probably save about a thousand dollars.
So is that just total city usage?
Yep.
I mean, that's everything for your...
No, that, yeah, it's the city.
Yeah, everything you use.
I provide, it's not streetlights though. Streetlights are excluded.
They don't count.
They don't count. So I provided him with all of our, I provided him with our accounts, and so he came up with the amount.
Yeah, and Excel gave us, uh, we took your account numbers, looked at all your bills, and Excel sent it to us. Um, and we could double check, uh, to make sure that's accurate. It seems a bit small, but, um, not, not so much. So over twenty-five years, you know, if you added everything up, and you look at different, um, rates and stuff, you're looking at estimated about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars saved on your energy bill. It's not a blow to load of money, but it is savings, and it's great to say, hey, you're a hundred percent powered by solar, which is a pretty cool thing to do. And say, we're, we're choosing to do this.
So how come your rates never increase?
So our rates have no escalation on them. We have a fixed rate for twenty-five years. Your rate from Excel follows the Excel rate increases. So generally, year over year, Excel goes back to the PUC and says we'd like to increase rates. As they increase, say, three, three percent, four percent, five percent, whatever it is, they also increase your bill credit. So you receive a bigger benefit every year. So in a way, while it's not a financial product, you are hedging against Excel's rate increase. Because if they increase rates, you also, you also get a higher bill credit. You also receive more back from Excel. Which kind of stabilizes your, your costs. And it's a little bit, a little bit better for budgeting and predictability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So, and then, I, what I did is, um, I had Excel rates increasing at four percent, which past ten years they've increased about four or five percent. If they increase three percent or two percent, um, on page thirteen, there's a couple of different scenarios.
And I'm just, again, Nikki asked, well, your rates don't increase, I'm curious why not? I mean, it's kind of unusual to see that.
Yeah, I mean, generally we do have rate increases. Um, we've been, a lot of folks have been asking for zero escalating rates, and we've just worked with the financiers to, to get a product that works. Um, generally, for example, we would have a rate increase, but your starting rate would be like ten and a half cents. So we'd lower your starting rate, but we'd increase it year over year. So this was a way that we were able to stabilize that rate. Um, if you'd like to look at a different option that has rate increases, we can do that. It would start at a lower rate, maybe ten and a quarter, or ten and a half cents. Um, different savings model, but this one will, will be your best, your best bet. Um, another thing we do is, SunShare in our history, you know, we started as a small company in Colorado, reaching out to communities, so we can reach out to residents, give them a, this special unique rate, um, with extra savings than our traditional one. Um, if the city were to sign up, say, hey, you can also participate in this option. Um, and we work with churches and schools. We're working on the school curriculum that you can put into the schools, um, eight through twelve. Things like that, it's, it's a pretty cool deal.
And so, all we need to do then is, we're just going to sign up for this, there's no cost on our part?
No, no capital cost. Um, when we actually build the project, and we plug it in, and Excel stands approved, that's when the meter will start ticking. So that's when Excel will say, hey, this month, your portion of that garden, your, say, twenty panels, produced this much, we'll send you the bill credit, and then we would send you the bill on our side. So it'd be month to month, it would, it would be lined up as the production happens.
So if I understand this right, then you're banking on the fact that, like, us doing this, there'll be more and more people doing this, and so you can expand your gardens?
You got it.
Okay.
So in Colorado, we did about eleven megawatts, we're completely sold out, and we're about fifty percent full capacity so far in Minnesota. So, it's been, it's been quite popular, it's been good.
So you just have to find all the space to do it?
Yeah, actually, to, to be honest, you're right. The, the hardest thing about business is finding the land. Um, and the, not so much the land, it's also the electrical capacity of the grid. So when we have to go out and build, say, fifty acres, which is a lot of solar, right? Guess who gets to upgrade the grid and pay Excel to do all the upgrades for that? We do. So there's a point where we install so much that it's not cost effective for us to build anymore, that we're trying to build as much as we can. So, so far we haven't hit that roadblock.
And you don't see any potential problems with the Minnesota weather's climate?
No, it's all planned into our numbers. Um, and all planned into how Excel pays you guys. Your rate's a bit higher than, than what Colorado is because of that, so they have to pay a little bit more for solar. Um, but yeah, we've, we've kind of studied it, and Morton said being up here for, for so long, they've kind of helped us out a lot.
It only works on sunny days?
Yep. So if it was really cloudy and dark, you wouldn't produce any solar, right? Which means you're not paying us for solar because we're not producing, but you're also not receiving bill credits. So you would just pay your normal bill. Let's say we had a block, a blackout for a month, and there was no sun, right? You would...
Cataclysm.
Yeah, well, you probably have to figure issues in life if that happened, but your, your normal Excel bill that you guys receive every month would be the same bill.
And then residents, if we sign up for it, residents would be able to share as well, or?
Yeah. It could be kind of a city project, yes, sign up for the city. We would still do all the paperwork, but, you know, a unique program, and hey, you guys can save fifteen percent on your electric bill, you know, something, something like that.
Can you hop on the program at any time? Like, could the city try it, see how they...
Oh, sure.
...come out at the end of the year, and then offer it to the residents?
I think so. I think the only limitation you'd want to take a look at is, as we build out, there's only so much we'll be able to build.
Mm-hmm.
We're fifty percent full now, Colorado's sold out, so at what time are we sold out? Is it tomorrow, or is it six months? I couldn't tell you. We have more demand than we can fill, so...
And how, and you just thought, let's call the city mayor, or?
Yeah, yeah. We have a whole team that does outreach, and the city mayor popped up, yeah.
Okay.
So, actually, most of the folks we've worked with...
That was a great question.
In Colorado, where the cities and school districts, city universities were kind of our key, you know, customer group that we worked with.
So fun.
It is.
So when you look at the estimated savings, that'd be based on the weather conditions?
Well, a little bit, yeah. So what we do, if, if you guys don't mind diving into some details, we take that a hundred, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred, if you look at that?
Yep.
And let's make sure I'm doing this the right way. If you divide that by one thousand, three hundred and fifty. One thousand, three hundred and fifty is our conversion factor from sunlight to actual energy produced. It's kilowatt hours per kilowatt. And in Colorado, it's eighteen hundred, in Arizona, it's twenty-two hundred, up here, it's thirteen fifty. So as you can see, we kind of took the, the lesser sun, or the less sun intensity into account. So it'll double the conversion factor in, um, in Arizona.
Which makes sense.
Yeah. Meaning in Arizona, you put four panels out, you'll get the same as you would eight panels up here. If that makes sense. So yeah, the, the sunlight, it's, it's based on national weather data.
Okay. So, from us, you would need, I see there's a letter of intent in here. So that's all we would need to act on?
Yeah. The way the process works is we sign you up for a letter of intent, and what that does is it reserves your space in our capacity, so you guys don't have to worry about it. Then also, it's kind of a gentleman's handshake, it's not binding, but it's a handshake of, hey, let's work through and then find a solution. You know, we talk about contracts and all that, and it allows us to move forward, and, you know, dive into the details.
Or has there ever been any other cities around? You said, you said Carver, so the city, Carver County, is there a spot for a solar garden?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have other cities around us signed up yet?
Uh...
Or you, or is that, I don't know if you can say that?
Cities, no. We, right now, we have a lot of corporations in school districts kind of signing up, but cities are our next target.
Well, we're one of them.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, a letter of intent's the next step. It's, it's not binding, you know, if we ended up not deciding to work together, it'd be fine. Um, that allows us to sit down, look at contracts, get used, reserve capacity, and then we can, we can go from there.
Right, interesting.
Fun idea.
Mm-hmm.
What happens if you run out of capacity and more people, more residents will sign onto this?
Well, usually we do a waiting list, and the hope would be that Excel would eventually allow us to build more. That a lot of times where it, you know, Excel's win, uh, how much they're going to allow us to build. Right now, the, the program is uncapped, but, um, there's a lot of topics that we see of making the program smaller.
Aren't they, aren't they being mandated to find renewable energy sources?
They are.
I mean, there's kind of a pushing this.
And that's kind of what, yeah, so by twenty twenty, one point five percent needs to be solar, by twenty thirty, it's ten percent, and that's what's driving a lot of this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the idea was, hey, if you set it up to where customers, instead of Excel just charging you out of your rate without choice in it, it allows you to choose to go solar or not go solar, um, which is pretty cool.
You said, you've been contacting school, uh, school districts, they've been...
Yeah, but, so we've been talking to a number of schools, uh, corporations.
Must have talked to, I up here, they use a lot, a lot of power too, so...
Yeah. There's a lot of big power users around, schools use a lot.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of kids don't know how to turn lights off up there.
Yeah.
Even, it's just, they're just open all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so actually, there's, the Lutheran is high school, right?
Yeah.
And then there, church or is that like a middle school?
Uh, grade school, middle and school.
Okay, so those guys could sign up too, and you guys could all kind of come together and say, they are top, you know, almost to the point where our whole town, businesses are all solar powered, which is pretty cool.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, okay. Um, anybody have any other questions, those, we'll have Luann put this on our agenda for next meeting?
Okay. Is that the best next step? Were you guys...
That's the best next step, yeah.
We do more questions, so we still have to vote.
Okay.
We did the letters, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, the only thing we're really into you for is land.
No.
Um, not even that right now.
Not even that.
Well, not, I mean, assuming that this was to, was to go through, that this land was, was good.
They don't need our land.
No, they don't need our land.
They don't need it.
We can find another one they already have.
If we're already going through the engineering studies, um, we should have approval next month or some.
They just generate energy, they give it to Excel, and then Excel gets all...
No, if you have land, we'd be happy to take a look, but it's not everybody, it's just part of it.
And currently, you're not buying land to build these, you're just using?
We lease or purchase. So at times we will purchase land, um, at times we lease.
Okay.
So, and we pay one and a half to two times ad rate within the area. So it's a pretty good, you know, one for farmers, but if they're producing pretty good, they, they want to keep producing, so it's usually, you know, soil hasn't too good.
Funny, because I know a piece of land that's slated for this.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's under obligation, but I don't know who with.
I don't know.
At the current time.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll find out.
Yeah. It could be us, it could be someone else.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
We'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Perfect.
Uh, which is second...
The eleventh?
The eleventh, the eleventh, the eleventh.
Okay. You need a few notes for me?
We'll let you know, we'll let you know.
Yeah, you guys have my car in contact.
Yeah.
Yep. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll leave that one to the next one.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, there's a snowbath thing evidently, uh, something before Kyle.
I, I know Luann just mentioned it, we need some of our two, some of our trucks for sale. I don't want, if that...
You don't want them?
No, I think it's, I didn't want it either.
Yeah, a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty thousand, uh, the state truck. I think it'd be a good plan for the city to start planning, purchase, you know, one million in the next five years, but, no, I don't want that.
Okay. As long as you don't want it, then we're going to move on.
Oh, that was a quick one.
That was really quick.
That was nice.
Okay, recycling coupons for event. And I think, um...
I like the coupons.
So do I.
Yeah.
I've used them too.
And they're really not hard to implement. We have some leftover, and that happened the, the first time that we had the coupon, and we just changed the date, you know, and then handed out the rest of them. And you can see how many are handed out, and how many are actually even redeemed, so we have a...
And, and people can just come up here and get those, or like, how do...
Yeah, one per...
One per household?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, and then we pay whatever's for redeemed. Mm-hmm, yep. Like, once a year, or maybe twice a year, then Watertown, um, sends us a bill with the actual coupons. And, so we know actually who has even redeemed them, because we put the name on the bag, or the address on the bag.
Don't we get reimbursed for this?
We do.
Through the Carver County?
Then we turn that bill into Carver County, so it's kind of a no-brainer after.
Yeah.
I think we need to do it.
I must have to do it.
I think what, then what Luann wanted to talk about was an event. Do we, maybe in addition to using the rest of coupons, do we plan for like, um, another collection of, um, like electronics? I know that when that's happened in the past, we don't do that every year, so it's kind of a pain, you know, but if there is money left from the county, we could put it towards, um, you know, even if people pay half the amount or whatever, of trying to get rid of electronics, because that's always the hardest part for people to do, all their leftover...
And then, you know, they are throwing in the trash, and just makes it worse for landfills and the environment, and...
Right.
So then they, they bring them up here, and then Kyle has to hold them?
We have to have, uh, either we take them someplace, or I think that's what's happened in the past, or we've gotten, I know in the other times we've had, remember the big bins that we had?
Yeah.
That, um, that was back when we collected at the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, I think, um, that electronics collection up here would be a good thing to offer, um...
And it could happen maybe the same week as spring cleanup.
Right. Well, let's put, have that on the agenda too, to set a date for it and to move forward. Then maybe she can find, get some information on it. If we'll send a little more on it then.
I don't like it, I think it's a great idea.
I can think of things laying at home too that I could get rid of. Okay, uh, finally, communications with residents. And, um, I think this goes back to our discussion earlier, a month or so ago, about ways to keep our residents informed. Um, I, did I see the people from the coffee shop here, they...
Yeah, they, I don't know why they...
There's something tomorrow, Luann was saying, it's tomorrow night.
Oh. Well, she had it in our council package. Or was it in EDA?
Maybe they were going to be...
It wasn't in mine.
They were maybe going to recognize them as new business owners?
Oh, it's in EDA.
Because they did open on Friday.
I'm so excited, I haven't, I'm not here. I can't wait. Oh. Weekend. Maybe tomorrow, when I, they open at Sunday.
They, um, not on Tuesday.
Okay.
That's the only day they're not open. Okay, so, you know, I was the one that kind of brought up this. So I talked to some people, like, how they, you know, how would you like to receive information from the city? What would you like? And I said, you know, you want to do email, you want to do Facebook, the website? And they said Facebook immediately. And they said, and their mom's my age, she said, we don't know what's going on. She's like, we just found out that the citywide pickup cleanup day was changed. I don't remember how they found out about it. It wasn't, they said they never look at the electronic signs.
I saw a sign in, a mayor mobile on the door.
Yeah, so...
And we put signs out in the beginning of the edition. We should have, and we're supposed to be on that earlier.
I, I mean, just, it was just an example, and, you know, I don't know what the, I don't know if Luann looked to see what the fee is for, I mean, I don't think we're posting a lot on Facebook anyway, but maybe...
I don't know how it works when you're a city, if it's public.
She said there's a fee for every post you do.
Oh.
But it's probably minimal. And people...
And we can find out what fees are?
Yeah, for Facebook, um, Twitter, and then, we still, I mean, you know, we don't do the quarterly newsletters any, or, because that would be for the older generations, you know, because I don't want to leave out anybody. So we ha, I think we have to think about, um, Shape It Up Fitness does, uh, email subscription.
I liked that idea.
Um, where you would go to their website, and you just type in your email, and then you would get a subscription. So I know there's a fee, I could ask her what service she uses, and what her fee, what that fee is, but literally, she just, I went onto her website and typed in my email address and hit subscribe, and then you can unsubscribe when you want. I don't think, and then we could still do a newsletter, it emails out. I mean, I think there's lots, we have to think of all the generations that live here, and we kind of have that thread that we got from the census, or something about the different ages that live here.
Well, if the newsletter's mailed out, people don't look at it?
I read it, but I think for getting out immediate information, or things that, you know, people want to know about, like, oh, it's, it's national, and out, don't forget to stop by City Hall, and it just shows up on their news feed. I mean, and I'm always at, you know, if you miss a day, sometimes you go back even to that last post you saw.
We should look into the fees on it, and how much it's gonna cost to.
But I don't think anybody, I mean, I, the only reason I know what's going on now is because I'm in city council, I had no idea what was happening.
Well, some of that is there.
I mean, that's my own fault too.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was gonna say, where, you know, you can watch them online, you can watch them online, you can.
Well, right, but I don't think people even know you can, so, you know, there, there's, or, and I didn't know that I could come to a meeting.
Yeah.
The only meetings I ever came to was when we were putting in the new road project for our street, when I came up here, because I wanted certain gutter, curb and gutters. I, I didn't want the European or whatever, because I didn't want to have to go at my driveway at an angle. You know, I wanted what we had, what we received, that was my only thing. But I had no idea that I could come to a council meeting, I know that sounds, that's my own not understanding the, the government.
No, it's, it's prob, it's probably.
But I know that I'm not the only one.
It's probably not as usual, no. Uh, there are those people that feel, um, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised that Facebook, try, I have.
Well, that's what Luann had mentioned.
I know, that's what Luann said, and I, it's.
So I don't.
Because it's the government.
Right, I mean, they have to make, Facebook makes money through advertising, and if there is, but I mean, if you look at.
They don't charge businesses, and Moxie's got a page.
Yeah.
Oh, Luann mentioned to me something about frontier having, so I know she said I had, but I don't know, I don't, I don't.
I mean, I can look up, so I just haven't had time.
You know, I said the Lurdiard has a Facebook, we don't get charged anything, although we don't.
But it's not a government, she said it, a government agency is what she was saying last time.
But that just sounds so, like, they don't get, you don't have to pay tax, taxes, we have to pay Facebook, you know, like, you know, like, it's weird.
I don't, I don't, I might be terrible. I've been posting stuff on the Sheriff's Office Facebook page, and, um, nobody's ever said, we're gonna be charged, keep it down to.
Yeah, like, you can only post, like.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And how do they charge? Does Facebook send bills? I don't, they don't have a bill, do they?
I, we have, the city of mayor has a Facebook page.
Yeah, but it's not used because she thinks it has to be charged, they, we haven't used it.
Somebody's got an email from Facebook and asked.
Yeah, right?
We should just post stuff.
Let's post a whole bunch of stuff on there and see what happens.
Post stuff on her and.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we can just advertise, you know, and then on our website, can say, like us on Facebook, whenever a new resident comes, you know, we give them a, do we give them a welcome packet? You know, if they like us on Twi, here's our Twitter, here's our Facebook, if you'd like to, you know, maybe the subscription for email isn't bad, because, you know, then we can send.
I think if you Google this, if you Google the city of mayor, you actually, one of the first ones that come up is the Facebook page.
Yeah, so I mean, we have it, I just know that.
Maybe we just have to do more informa, or more digging in to see, do we really, is there really a fee?
Right, because I just think it's such a great avenue, and a lot of people use that for their information. Not everybody's on Facebook, but that's why we have to have a couple different, and if you, I read through some of these, and I mean, every city has several different, it's not just one. You know, like, they don't just do a newsletter, they don't, you know, so we've got the paper that Kathy does, she puts some things in there, and so that's where I think a lot of the.
And a lot of, we need to be telling her what to put in there.
Right, so I think that's another thing that we need to be more cognizant of, to make sure that we're getting that generation that's still getting the paper.
Don't let me forget I want a subscription.
Well, and, and listen to Facebook, which I realize, you know, I, I look at it too all the time, that's where I get a lot of, a lot of tidbits information too. I think a weekly email thing via this constant contact, if it just be a short, Monday morning email.
You could even do mon, you could even do mon, I mean, she just does monthly, she sends out her monthly calendar, you know, and you can just say, and it's just a simple email.
Coming up this month. Sometimes if it's weekly, then you're just like, oh, here's another one.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, right, yeah.
Last ti, you know.
Yeah, I don't want more work for the city staff, but I think that we do not do a good job of communicating with our residents. And knowing what they want and need. You know, because, I mean, we have so many different activities around here that, you know, Mayor Moxie, we, we could get more people, you know, because fifty-five people was huge, like that.
Well, my com.
And everybody likes it, liked it.
I was gonna say, my comment as far as not leaving people out, uh, you'd be surprised how many people have email addresses, I mean, all ages, so you're not going to necessarily leave anybody out by age group.
Well, and you can subscribe, so we, you know, if you'd like to get that, then, and then we just can pass the word to people, I mean, you know, different people, you know, you start passing the word, you start, you know, putting things out, we can put it in the paper saying, we have a new, I don't know if it's cost effective, I'm assuming it's not horribly priced, because it's, you know.
Why don't, why don't you just have Luann find out the cost of this constant contact? Um, you know, I mean, you said we want to do, you know, weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, wherever it needs to be, or as needed, uh. Surprised, I, I get a lot of daily emails and some I T type things, and it's, even though I don't read them all, I glance at the headlines, and I, I do save a lot of things just as PDFs on my, on a hard drive, so I can back them later.
You have to have the right person.
And the people that I talk to, she's like, I like the city of Minneapolis's Facebook page, I like the city of Arlington, I think that's where she was from. You know, so, and it's, and I, my friends always, uh, they live in Waverly, they're always sharing Waverly's Facebook page, with just different things, like, hey, get ready to sign up for the community, we're doing it again.
We just have to pass away the lead, to find out what do they do?
Mm-hmm, and do they get charged?
You know, if that's the, if that's the thing.
Yeah, I know someone on city council, so I'll, um, I'll ask them if they can tell me if they have to, if they pay a fee.
Yeah, why don't you check, check in that one?
Luann'll, Luann'll call, she'll call the people that, the administrators, and they'll know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, follow up on that one. Okay, yeah, so if, if have, have Luann find out the constant contact, and if she wants to contact, say Arlington about their Facebook thing, and.
Look into it, yeah. And the email thing.
I mean, if it's, look at Twitter.
Yes, I'm here to say zero cost.
Zero cost of this fat page.
Yeah, so I, she must have been given misinformation when she had mentioned it, which that can happen, so. I don't know, I think it's, I mean, we're not talking huge communicating, we don't even have to communicate once a week on Facebook, but when there's something coming up, I can't just remember, a citywide cleanup, or a citywide garage sale, you know, in two weeks.
Some hydrants, uh, wheel coating, you know, all that.
How are all the people?
Yeah. Right, exactly.
I got two calls, they're dirty helicopters, you know, but I don't think it's that. You know, they said, no, they weren't medical, they were army, and I'm like, the military? No. So, yeah, people are trying to figure out what's going on in town.
We can say, hey, we have some new sand volleyball courts going up, come check them out, or.
And, and the day of that, my car crash, it was a good day to have an email go out to A B four, telling people what's happening, because, I mean, it was an excellent presentation, but I'm, there's sure a lot of people wondering what the heck is going on in town.
Right, yeah.
So.
When they start doing civil defense.
Yeah.
Lots of things, wrong about things.
But I just need to make sure we cover each, so we can't just pick one, I think it has, and you just can have the same method, like, go out to each one, it's just a different platform.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then we are adjourned.